Please stand for the flag. The flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with never tending to its throne.
First up is approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
And move on to second. All those who say five is saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign. Ocean carries. Uh, first up is informational items, uh, thank you from the Wush history.
We just want to let you see, we gotta thank you, and I think it's always good to honor that. To, you know, when we do something forget, we just like to make sure it's in public.
That was a great card, so thank you. Um, Selena, is there anybody signed up? Like anybody online? All right, we'll skip to hearing your visitors, student rep reports. You should have a lot. Sorry, Yoshimi. Well, it's first day of school, right?
Second. We have a new fight on the action. Um, but the general students will relearn the like fight sound, but a little embellishment, a little bit of embellishment on it, and then they learn that to how we simply, you know, we're working on three on Monday, I do. And my whistle, and then the miscellaneous running start.
Ben? Uh, because school start, I finally have a Chromebook again, and I am now able to continue with my plan of creating a like form for students to fill out to like submit problems that they have to me, so I like bring to, I'll bring to them and figure out how to best deal with it.
Nice.
Um, for athletics, football has a jamboree on Friday. Oh, we're turning full swing.
That was the first couple of days of school. How was? Good? Smooth as can be?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I want you everybody to know, we gotta celebrate a little bit. Remember last year when we did the first day of school, it was like my sixtieth day or so on the job, and the list of problems were like this long? Could you hear what they said? And I didn't bribe him, I didn't pay him. We gotta celebrate the wins when we commit.
That's right.
I did have a question. Um, how do you plan to link up with the middle school leadership team? I think you guys did something last year.
We met there every speed twice. It didn't get set up all the way, cause you know, Kim was still new, but I think this year will be both.
Any other question?
I have a question. Yoshi, what are your band songs that you're playing on that day?
Uh, we're doing funky town on West Group, which is what we did at Lilac, and I think it's a pretty good tempo.
Okay, I'm excited.
All right, moving on to discussion items. Is the study and survey facility for you?
That's.
Is that champagne?
I'm Ed Champagne, Architects West, um, architect for most of the projects we've got going on and have had in the past. The study and survey, you guys have a copy of the draft in, I understand, and it's a draft, there's still some things to be added, and, um, you know, just kinda wanted you to get eyes on it, because we will be here for approval of it whenever we, you know, incorporate the whatever comments you might have. Uh, and it's really, it's the first, um, it's the first step in having, uh, the potential to get any state match from, from OSPI. Um, they require it every so many years, and, excuse me. And this, um, is, is kinda the first step in that. Uh, the, the cost for preparing this is, is, uh, is taken care of by a grant from OSPI, so costs you nothing and, and gets you in line for any potential, um, projects that you might have in the future that the, the state would help you out on. Um, if you look through this, or it's, it's, uh, organized into about ten chapters, uh, the meeting, or the, the one that everybody's most interested in usually is the, is the first part, it's the building condition assessments, um, it talks about the, the systems that you have, and, and there's a narrative on, on that kinda stuff. Obviously, most of your buildings are in pretty good shape right now, uh, with the exception of Housel, and that's reflected in that, and that also kinda leads into the, you know, the, the next step, but that's, Housel is the only building that would, that could potentially have, um, any state match, and that would be mostly due to age eligibility, it's called. Um, it's been thirty years since you've gone to the, to the funding trough for any work at Housel, but that's in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, depending upon whose, uh, information you look at right now, and that's one of the things we'll be chasing down with them. Um, so if there's eligibility based on, on need of, on how students, which probably do not have, but there's, uh, some assistance available, um, just due to that, to the age of the building. Uh, also in here is, is the, uh, bonding capacity information from, um, from DA Davidson, which shows that you do have the borrowing capability, should you choose to pursue bond to, uh, to take care of, um, any share. Talks a little bit about the demographics of the, of the Prosser School District, um, and then a few other just housekeeping odds and ends. They used to have something in there which they think they finally, uh, did away with of asking neighboring districts if they had any capacity, and shockingly, in thirty years, I've never had a district say, yeah, we, we've got, we can take some of you guys on. So I think OSPI just basically gave up asking that question. Um, but, so if you've had an opportunity to, to read through it and have any questions or just questions about the, the process in general, I'm, I'm here and happy to answer them for you.
I've got a few.
Yes, sir.
Um, if I start at the high school. I'll go down to HVAC.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things, um, they talk about distribution. But deficiencies are uneven, uneven cut coverage in the south side heats up faster than the north, and my first, uh, needs AC faster, um, than the rest of the, of the building. So when, when we design, when we, when a building is designed, how, how does, how do we fix this so that it's more even in a brand new school?
This is actually pretty easy to fix, because, um, it's, you know, it would have to do with your DDC system, your, your direct digital control system, it's your thermostats, basically. So each individual room, you know, has a, has a thermostat, and the, it, it actually works out really well to have one side be a little bit different, different temperature than the other side, because the, the HVAC system in this, in this building is a, is a loop of conditioned water, basically. So if it's picking up heat on this side, it can discharge heat over here or vice versa. So it should not be an issue to, to, uh, to take care of this. And I think that, um, that, you know, being a fairly new building, we're, uh, kinda looking for, for things that, uh, that, you know, might not be in the excellent column, and as a matter of fact, um, uh, Andy did the, kinda the first run-through of these, and, and his, his philosophy is if it's not brand new and hasn't been used, and it's not excellent, which moves it down into the, into the good column. So you end up with a, with a relatively new building, but doesn't score quite where, you know, you, you think it should, or it probably should in the, you know, metric of the, of OSPI's four.
I think I'm gonna add to that what we've experienced with, um, HVAC. A lot of it is learning the people, actually teaching the people how to use the system and open and control the valves inside the program. I'll give an example at Heights, if you happen to see this on Heights, we have a teacher who has a, um, a medical situation, and her doctor said she needs to have a room at this temperature. You find the room number on there, you change the metrics on the program, and so we reduce, we give her a seven degree range instead of a five degree range, drop her range down, and now her room is cool. So, but you really have to learn how that works, and you have to understand, and it's a manpower thing. You know, in a perfect world, and you can help me, it's in a perfect world, somebody would sit at that computer every morning and make sure all valves are open and closed, you don't have any red. So we have this map, and it's red, pink, green, yellow, right? Like it, and you would wanna look at each building every morning to make sure it's in the green, and then you can manage those south side, um, you know, north sides of the buildings a little bit different as the seasons change and, and create a program. So it's a ti- it's a time and a teaching.
And these are pretty sophisticated systems, and, and it's every year, OSPI and, and this, the state requires it to get even more complicated. So it's like Kim alluded to, there's probably four valves for every, um, for every heat pump, for every classroom, and, you know, or every space. So if you, you know, multiply the number of valves by the number of spaces that you have, there's hundreds of these things that, uh, need to be monitored constantly.
Have one more on the high school, uh, which is under communications, it said that some of the, that's something the contractor came back and fixed.
That's something that, that, that the contractor could come back and fix, this is a, you know, I can't say that I was aware of this before this draft came out, so if that's an issue, and, and. So he, I guess, um, I can, and that's it, is I, I mean, I can talk to Brian, he's still, is he the principal here?
Yes.
Okay, talk to Brian, see where this issue is, and, you know, solve it.
Page eighty-one of eighty-three in the packet, no, sorry. Page ninety-five of the packet, eighty-one of eighty-three of the plan. Capital facilities, capital facilities plan. And a summary of proposed facility improvements. And I, I'm not sure if this is the right, it means a question for you and Ian, but part of, I think, this is part of our goal is to look at facilities, but what I didn't see, um, you know, kind of in, in this one is like, I'm gonna take the high school, right? So we just talked about the HVAC and the heater system, that's crazy, complex, you know, that there is a shelf life to that system, or the program, or whatever that, however that works, I don't, I don't know it. What is the shelf life of that system, and when should we look at? How do we maintain it? One, how do we update it? When does it need to be replaced? Or what is the shelf life of it, right? So we don't get ten years down the line, all of a sudden this whole thing goes haywire, there's not, you, you can't buy any of the parts or any of stuff like that. How do we get that type of planning so that we can prepare as a board or a future board, or, you know, the district in the future, and start looking at these projects strategically versus in an emergency?
So, um, you know, taking that and running a little bit further, the DDC system, you know, you've kinda, you, you could change, they've gotten a lot, a lot more, a lot more interactive than they, than they used to be. It used to be that, you know, when you did a project, you signed on and you got automated logic controls through standard plumbing and heating, or Robert Shaw through, you know, Northwest, whatever they're called. So you, you bought that package, because that was, you know, probably the, the least expensive, or if you were familiar with it, you know, you paid a little bit more and got, got that system. So then it became much more difficult for you to switch systems as you added, added buildings. So this, the DDC system that you have right now, it's over there, I can't quite read what it is, but, so that is, that's your district standard now, okay? And so whatever projects that you, that you do from here on out, if they're not that system, they need to be able to talk to that system. And then since this is, you know, there's a, there are handful, three or four probably are the industry standards for, for direct digital controls of these kinda complicated systems. So they will continue to, to update, to service, but, you know, at some point in time, twenty, thirty years, you know, down the, down the road, all these things do kinda, kinda, but the company is still there, they're still, they're offering upgrades, you know, as, as you go along. So that's kinda the best that you can, can hope for, there, anything that you, that you do is not gonna last for, for thirty years, basically.
Then, then I wasn't really getting at that, but I mean, like, like our computers are outdated.
Yeah, by the time, yeah.
After we buy a new one. And this is my simple way of thinking about it, if the computer system is outdated, I'm, I'm sure there's new, better things today than there was three or four years ago when we started this school project. You know, my concern, and, and I think it, it's been, well, it's irrelevant now, but what I don't want us to get into is to have a situation where we're band-aiding it, like we did the high school, the old high school for thirty years.
And that was, that, and that's, that's a great way of looking at it, because, you know, that building was hundred years. It had been renovated, and so you had these thirty-year-old systems that are, that are failing like thirty-year-old systems do.
You know, should they have been replaced at fifteen years? That gets.
Very likely, and that's, and so that's, um, OSPI has something, and they're, they're, they kind of encourage you to, to do that, that they, they have, oh, it's called the as- asset preservation program, which means that, that as a district, you need to maintain these buildings, you need to replace, you need to upgrade at fifteen years or whatever, these, these systems, because, you know, there had been, it had been over thirty years, um, when the bond was passed, and since anything had been, I guess Housel had been, had been modernized, but at the high school, it had been forty-plus years since anything had been done, so that's a great observation, is as a, as a board, you should be investing in, in, in maintaining and, and keeping up all of these facilities, so you don't end up in a situation where it's, you know, you've got no choice but to replace.
Like five, ten, fifteen-year plan, where you've got, whatever it is, five years out, or like, and potentially having to replace X at. Right. Key review. Right. Like build that list of the five-year, ten-year, twenty-years, hey, this is where we need to put money to.
Yeah, that's, I think that's my point, that, if, I'm sorry, I didn't come across that way, but I think if, if we are proactive instead of reactive.
Yeah.
And we have, I don't know what it's called, but I, I, I thought it was called the capital facilities.
There, there, that.
But what was the, you said, an asset sum?
Asset preservation program, and there are, and this gets into, um, there are a lot of services that Andy could subscribe to or buy a program for or whatever. I don't know exactly how your situation works now with that, but, um, a lot of districts of, of this size will have a, a program, you know, they'll have bought some, you know, some maintenance program, that will say, okay, you need to replace the, 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 um, air filters in, in this wing, you know, in March, and then it'll come around in six months or say, you know, same thing, so it'll, it'll stagger it kinda based on your, on your manpower, but it'll give you a list of stuff to do to maximize the value that you get.
Way mathematically, is there any general rules of, um, industry-wise for educational up facilities to say, okay, you need to plan X percentage of your cap, of your, um, assets for repairs every five years? I mean, is there a way that we could, is there anything like that? So when we say, okay, this is our five-year plan, right? Between zero and five, this, we're gonna, uh, but your five to ten on some of those buildings is bigger, because it's five to ten years older, so we need a different amount of money, because the, we're not doing air filters in year two and three, we're gonna do window replacement, we're gonna do painting, we're gonna do.
You get out to, yeah, fifteen or twenty years, you, you should expect to replace twenty percent of your heat pumps or something like that. So when, when you all go to, to Wasda in, you know, November in, in Spokane, there'll be booths selling exactly that sort of a, of a plan.
Are any of our building management controls network connected?
They're all.
They're all. I think, I mean, I don't know what kinds of controls there are, but those nowadays, at least, they, they're an IT device, they have a pretty short life.
The, I guess I, I would, I have not heard of there being issues with, you know, something failing every, every year or two on, on like these thermostats, I'm gonna call them, it's, there's, there's a better name for it. But, you know, I think that some of this is a little bit more robust, and, um, the, the, the programs, again, get, get updated pretty, pretty constantly, so they're, they're pretty reliable overall system, um, you know, if you're.
Thinking more, not about the component itself, but just the technology, right? Moves so quickly that oftentimes you just don't have to write, you know, technology anymore, it's outdated within just a couple of years, but your controllers, your controllers themselves might not be serviced by whoever used to service them. That's something. So if that's, you know, it's not a mechanical appointment, it would be.
It's in our tech budget. So the, I use the word software, right? So software that controls all those programs, from our lighting and our sound and our HVAC and security, right? Those are all things, I think so many times when we talk technology, we think like laptops, right? And that in the really big scheme of it is a pretty small portion of the overall expenditure of our tech budget. That's the hardware stuff, right? That we have to keep track of, but the software and the people to, that's what I was explaining, the people to run that software, to manage that, is, um, and they become pretty like McKinstry, right? Like, like they're pretty tuned in to what, what you have to do to manage that, but then to teach someone, and then because we're not big enough to have just one person who does HVAC, they're gonna have to be trained in HVAC and lighting and, and sounds and the fire systems and, right? And that's what Andy's trying to get cut up on, but that's an example of what you're talking about in keeping up on that software side of things, I think. Is that right? Is that kinda what you're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah, and I guess, I mean, it makes sense that it's in the tech budget and not part of the capital.
Yep.
Budget.
Because it's ever, it's.
I think twenty years ago, it probably would have been in your capital budget, their mechanical components, but.
And that's, um, you know, when you have a system like that, then you're, it's a subscription, basically, I mean, you've, you, you have to, to, to buy their system to, you know, to get serviced, and then part of the service is continual updates of the, of the, the software, and then they'll advise you when you need to have, you know, the hardware replaced, and there's redundancies, all that.
Looking at the, the last page, eighty-three or eighty-three, do you have it? And then. Update the facility planning, so that should be the next time we do a survey like something, and would you recommend?
It, it would be the next time that OSPI would fund it.
Oh.
If there's something that, you know, that you want us to take a look at for whatever reason, then we'll come down and do it, we're, you know, we're around all the time, so.
What do you recommend? How often do we need?
For the study and survey, every seven years, because, yeah, because, you know, these things don't move that fast, yeah? Um, we've got like, like this, we've got another couple of years until, um, until any of your buildings are eligible for any state funding, so you really have to look at this, is this is not capital projects, this is not, or excuse me, this is not capital levy stuff, this is, this is, is, um, bond or, you know, some sort of a local share of a SCAP-funded project. This is where OSPI is coming.
SCAP to them?
SCAP is, is School Construction Assistance Program. OSPI, you know, has this, they have this whole bad band of folks that, uh, that helps districts that have passed bonds, uh, it becomes part of the, you know, the, the budget that goes to legislature every couple of years, and that's part of the reason that some of these small rural grants and that sort of thing are out here now, because the bonds are not passed, so OSPI, you know, has always had a, a big, healthy budget for school construction assistance. No, no, no schools are, are passing bonds and asking for assistance, so they kinda are looking for what places to, to, to spend their money, but, you know, so in a couple of years, you'd be eligible for that in, in, at Housel. And this is just, you know, we had to start somewhere with a, with a, a plan, and this is probably your most ambitious plan. It may or may not work for you guys to pass a bond for two, three, four, five, however many years, I mean, you know, there were a lot of years that you tried to pass a bond and, and, you know, sometimes things work and sometimes they don't, but.
That big pot that he's talking about where bonds aren't passing, remember, they took from small schools where less than two thousand to three thousand, and the reason they did that, they're having, they're afraid that they're gonna take that SCAP money away from the school system, so we can apply for small district modernization now, cause we're less than three thousand students, right? And then we get a portion of that SCAP to help do the history model, under that grant.
Yeah, you could concede, if, if, you know, if, if you're, the, the dollar figure's twelve million bucks, I think, right, two years? And so if your, your local share of this, of a SCAP-funded project is twelve million or less, then, then you could go ahead and do a, a full modernization without passing a bond, like we're doing, we're working with a couple of different districts that are, that are doing now. Um, but they're, they have a very high match rate, um, one of them's inchalium, it's up on the reservation, so they're at a ninety-seven percent match rate, so they, you know, they get a lot of money, a little bit of, of investment, and they will never in a million years pass a bond, because there's no taxable ground in the inchalium school district. So, yeah, the idea is, is just to say, okay, this is our, this is our best case or our, our most audacious plan, should we choose to, to pursue it, for, and that's what, that's what OSPI is kinda, that's, that's why they do these studies and surveys, is to say, okay, who's even interested in doing anything? And then, so that's, okay, then we're gonna, you know, earmark so many millions of dollars in case you do decide to do something, and then there's several more opportunities to check in, and then they adjust their, their ask from the, uh, legislature accordingly.
What's the next step, then?
Next step is if you guys have any, any changes that you want me to, to make to this, or, you know, any, based on any of these questions, we can, we can modify some of the BCA's. Um, there was, uh, there's a blank page in here, um, having to do with, with, uh, special needs, uh, spe- sped, special ed students numbers, and.
Just the numbers and things that have to go to OSPI, or some what I call housekeeping pieces of it.
And then, you know, we'll have, we'll have OSPI's regional coordinator, um, Mark Brown, take a look at this, he's always got a question saying, you know, is that greenhouse in there, that kinda stuff? But we'll do all of that, and then we'll come to you guys a couple of months, probably, and say, okay, this is the final document, and then you as a board would have to, to approve that document in order to, you know, for us to finalize it, send it to SPI and collect your, um, reimbursement for having done this.
I'm sorry, what happens once it's sent to OSPI?
They file it away, and they start saying, okay, well, Prosser, Prosser's, according to this document, Prosser may come to us for forty-five million dollars in twenty-twenty-six or seven or whatever, and then, so they just kinda keep that in their planning document.
Helps them plan.
It's just like us, they're doing a budget too, right? And so they have to kinda predict what the ask is gonna be, and then, but we wanna, one of the things you wanna do is you wanna be on the top of the ask and not on the bottom of the list of the ask, because when you start up here and you get to move up the list the longer you're on it, but you wanna be wherever their cutoff line is, you hope you're on the top half and not on the bottom of the line.
And for.
Wait till the next.
For years with, uh, with, with these SCAP-funded projects, the legislature's fully funded them for the last twenty years, every district that's asked, for about the last twenty years has gotten.
Yep.
Their match.
But we're not eligible until twenty-twenty-eight?
We're twenty-seven, twenty-eight, yeah. But you wanna, you know.
In line.
And have that, if, if you, if you're, you're going to do it, then you wanna be in a position to, again, be, be ahead of the curve on that, but your, your match eligibility wouldn't happen until then, that doesn't mean you can't start planning and that sort of thing, but.
How did they come up with the, uh, estimated total project costs?
Estimated total project costs is, is, you know, again, something that we just have to kinda take a stab at, so the, um, uh, there is an area cost allowance that, that, uh, that the state comes up with, it used to be pitiful, um, the cost of construction in heaven is how Mark Brown's predecessor would put it. Um, but, so basically, very simply, I went, okay, five, fifty bucks a square foot, this is the, the square footage of your building, you replace it, boom, that's where we're at, and then. And then.
It's just very general.
It's very general right now, yeah, this, it's, it's a totally a per square foot cost and, you know, the, a lot of things are gonna, are gonna change that over the course of the, of the planning process.
So if you do get approved for an OSPI grant or whatever it would be, who decides, like, who does the projects, does, is it, is it done by, I mean, can you use local contractors and things like that to support your local community?
Yes, so um, OSPI, they give you the money to do it, but of course, like anything else coming from the state, there are lots of little little, little strings attached to it. Um, so the, the, the bidding process has got its own set of strings attached to it. But as far as, as supporting, you know, local, um, local contractors and that kind of thing, the way that I always put it is you can't say X amount has to go local or anything like that, it has, it's a, in a competitive bid environment, okay? Um, now, there are other things that, like uh, progressive design builder or GCCM or something like that, where you're gonna hire a, a general contractor ahead of time, then they're going to, to, to sub it out, but basically, at the end of the day, if you've got a, a qualified, um, local contractor for a, a project of this scope, they're inherently gonna be less expensive and more competitive because they're not paying their guys a per diem to, to travel out of town or, or whatever, so usually you'll get somebody relatively local. Like for this project, I think the, the elec- uh, electrical contractor was out of Yakima, uh, general contractors out of Tri-Cities, HVAC, stretching my memory. It was Apollo, so Tri-Cities.
Estimated cost of construction is that today?
You, you have to, you have to plan on, yeah, you have to plan on, on today's because, you know, if you, if you want me to plan it out there, I'm gonna increase it twenty percent a year for the next few years. Yeah, and, and we have many more opportunities to, that, that's the good thing about this check in with the, with the state, because it may be, say it's five years before you pass a bond then. Um, but the construction cost allocation should go up and a lot of other things, so there are a lot of moving, a lot of moving parts until you can lock it in, for sure.
Under financial plan, you wrote the current funding assistant percentage from OSPI is seventy-six point nine-one percent. Well, that, is that static or could that go up?
That goes up or down. And that gets locked, there are about three different times that that can be locked in. Uh, it can be locked in at the, so there, I don't know how, how in-depth you want me to go in my, in my explanation, but um, you know, this is the, the, the study and survey grant is covered under the, it's called a D1, so there are the, there's a series of D forms that are part of the construction, um, the, the School Construction Assistance Program through about the D eleven, D thirteen, I think, is the, when you're, when you're done through everything. But um, there, there are three stages, basically, right up until you, you bid the, the, the project that you can, can lock in the, the funding assistance percentage and they will always allow you to go with the highest one.
One last question, um, see, so the estimated total project cost is sixty-five million, did you build the middle school, am I reading that right?
That's a total project cost, that's construction costs, soft costs, and again, that's a, is a very very.
Right.
Estimate, very, very broad estimate because, you know.
Almost as much as it costs to build this building.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And our potential S-CAP eligibility is like twenty-seven million-ish, eighty million?
Eighty, eighty-one of eighty-three, so um, oh, that's, that's, sorry, that's the renovation, new construction portion. Oh, sixty-two modernization replacement, sixty-two million again, project cost. Uh, so if you, if you apply that, that funding assistance to that, that's seventy-six percent, so you would have twenty-five percent of that, you would be responsible for twenty-five percent of that, but there are things that, that uh, that SCAP does not match on, things like local sales tax and, you know, doing your survey and your, your uh, um, asbestos, well, you know, you'd have asbestos in baby, you have to do hazardous materials assessments and there's stuff that they don't match, so you can't just say, boom, you know, seventy-six percent of of, of, of that, because they don't match everything, but in general, yeah, you, you're on the hook for about a quarter of it of the project cost.
Think when we did the remodel of the elementary schools, there was some thought after we were into the project that it might have been a good idea to build new and then tear down, because there was just so much unknown and the cost of stuff so high. Is that part of the consideration too, without?
If, this was, this is either modernization or replacement. So, you know, there's X amount of dollars that are, that are coming your way and if we decide that, that you want to do new in lieu of that, then you would add it's often thought that, that um, that it's gonna be cheaper to bulldoze something and, and start over, that's oftentimes that doesn't really work out because you have the cost of the demolition, you have the cost of the construction that was already there, the slab, the framing, the, that kind of thing, so rarely does it ever, I'm not gonna say never, rarely does it work out that it's gonna be cheaper to build new than it is to, to modernize.
Question. Shimi, Alexander, and, do you question?
So I think what I would like is for you to take, you know, a week or two and read, read it over. Um, send, add myself, myself probably, and then I would forward them on any questions or specific things that you'd like us to look into um, so that we can get like version two out to Mark, right? And get that to Mark Brown for him to start looking, because then he'll ask questions before we bring you the final in, probably first board meeting in October.
And.
Appreciate how knowledgeable you are about this whole process.
I've, I've been at it for a while. Um, yeah, I've, I've thirty years of doing exactly this and nothing else, so. Um, and again, this is the first step, so you'll have tons of questions as you go through this, but this is just kind of getting the ball rolling, getting you in line for funding should you choose to go there.
Right, thank you, I appreciate, thank you.
Tim said I can take my leave, so.
So I just wanted to keep up to speed, what's going on, um, we property was appraised in twenty-twenty-one, all of our properties were appraised in twenty-twenty-one. We went back to them because it's not that long ago, um, a lot of the work was done, we should have the appraisals back by October twenty or twenty-one. And then, um, then I'll come to what, what's the next step. Just wanted to bring you up to speed, there's been some people asking and whatever, I just wanted for public record that we're getting the appraisals back on the twentieth and then we've been talking about the Grand Avenue property, the White Church, we would know a false remove-in date for Boys and Girls Club, the three empty lots, what I call the triangle across from, or over by KRV. So I just wanted you to know in for public record that, that's what's going on.
Moving on to item G, can say items, one through.
I would make a motion to approve items number four.
And move in second. Alexander. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, post same sign. Moving on to item H voucher. I'm thinking that, I got one. It's uh, I don't check finally. Nine oh nine, seven, nine, six, city.
For a hundred dollars?
For a hundred bucks.
So those two false alarms at the district office when they were doing the remodel. Fifty bucks, false alarm.
We don't get a warning?
I don't, I don't think so, no.
You used to.
Yeah. Yeah, I, they didn't used to charge us, that's.
Maybe that's just how much it used to get.
We had a warning, maybe we had a warning, maybe that was two and three.
Possible.
I would make a motion to approve vouchers. And move in second in. Shimi, Alexander, Emmy. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Moving on to item two is Walden University US Fieldside Affiliation.
Very long title for a pretty simple thing, uh, the similar to a student teaching agreement, this allows Walden students to do counseling. Um, their counseling internship here so they can earn their full counseling certification.
This is new or a continuation of one?
We haven't had a Walden counseling before this is new.
Throughout the district or?
No, it's for the district, so if we had a student that wanted to do elementary or secondary, wouldn't, wouldn't it matter? We would be able to do it, so it's a district agreement. We have had Walden, I think Walden student teachers, but not for a while.
A couple of questions in the contract. Going to termination, uh, termination part of it.
Tell me where you're looking.
Um, it would be page one nineteen of the packet? Maybe?
What, um?
One of seven.
One of seven. Okay, there we go, that's a little bit, yeah, because when I open the attachment, it doesn't, it's not opening like that. Um, so most of them we do, they're usually four years, if there's a reason we didn't like their program or their students were coming in not knowledgeable. Um, we, we had some challenges a couple of years with one particular school's program and we haven't had any student teachers back from that program, they're supposed to be working on it to improve it. Um, but, yeah, so that just allows us to and either way, if they offered us a student, we could still say no.
So my question is, well, the five years was part of the question, the second is the last sentence. I think it's the last sentence is, if we terminate the agreement, unless I'm reading it wrong, um, before this student has completed their term, their student are allowed to stay here.
That they would be able to finish. Right, so basically they're trying, like if we decided we didn't wanna work with them anymore, they don't want the student punished.
So like they work on quarters, let's just say. So they start in September, we don't think things are going well, they have a place a student with us, it's October twenty-seventh and that student's term isn't over until December, we can terminate our agreement, we keep this child through or the student through December, right?
If there was a problem with this, well, student teacher counseling intern, we, we've actually had those situat- I had that, those situations as a principal, I just called the college and said, we're done. They're not, they're not welcome back anymore. Um, so, yeah, I don't know if that answers your question, but.
And that's okay, and I mean, as far as this contract goes.
Yeah, so like if there was a problem with a student, so I, I, I can only think of two cases that I know of and they were both when I was a principal. So I haven't had, we haven't had any situations where a teacher or, you know, a counseling supervisor come and said, this, this student is not working out, they gotta go. Um, one time it was with Central and another time it was with WGU when I was a principal, so this was several years ago and eh, the colleges are like, if you're having, if there's an issue and the student's not fulfilling their responsibilities, you can, eh, we're done. So, yeah. But it's not really a common problem.
And I think the opposite of what you're talking about is that we aren't happy with this particular college and we're saying they're not doing their paperwork, I don't know what would happen, but let's, we don't like it. Whoever, eh, the students with us until the end of that term, even if we end our contract.
As long as they're not.
As long as the student's not the problem.
Right.
So an example, maybe an example might be that they promise to pay the ma- the supervising teacher counselor a five hundred dollar stipend and they just don't pay. That doesn't really happen, but uh, some schools don't pay, most schools don't pay anything, but some give clock hours, different things or they're supposed to come and supervise, communicate with the master teacher or the super counseling supervisor and they're not doing that. They're not providing supervision for the student teacher, that's required, expecting the teacher to do something they didn't sign up for. Um, those kind of things, but could potentially be problems, but some, especially when you're dealing with online university.
Right.
But most of them have local people that come and do their supervision for them.
I think if you look at G, it says the field site reserves the right to dispendence, so ignore the field site.
Yeah.
Dispendence at any time, any student whose health condition, conduct or performance is a detriment to the student's ability successfully complete the field experience, so that, I think.
Yeah.
The, okay, if they're, what they're doing, their conduct is a detriment, that, I think is the lead.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
But I think that kind of answers that question.
So now going to that paragraph, my question maybe for, for everybody. Um, it says if it jeopardized the health, safety or well-being of any patients, clients or employees of the field site, um, would that be, and I, I'm not sure what the nature of this is, but would, would we not want to include students?
So I think that it's, it's termed that way because it's about counseling, but they probably also have social work students and other areas that are more within this whole umbrella, so that's probably why it's termed that way, um, but.
Students or the patient?
Well, if it was a social worker potentially, if it's a social work case or they might have some other counseling that, so it's probably generic language they're using.
I'm guessing it would be confusing if they used the term student referring to our students as well as their students, like which student do they mean?
But yeah, it is more, written more from the term of something medical versus school, yeah.
My last question is in D, uh, so this would be page five of seven?
Okay.
And it, just to be clear, we're not paying the.
Yeah.
Um, is, so what, I guess if we're not paying them, what part of?
So.
Affirming that, like us, we would apply to all local wage and labor laws.
So it's like if, so for some programs, so social workers are a good example. Um, some school districts, some agencies where you might go do your internship actually pay the students. That's why, so they're trying to, like if you're gonna, if people are gonna get paid, they want them to get, don't give them dollar three eighty-five, pay them whatever the going rate is. That's why, but we don't, we don't pay counseling interns, so.
Thank you.
They might like us too.
I'm seeing it says either party may terminate this agreement for any reason or no reason.
And honestly, what usually happens is we'll get to the end of the five years and if they're on it, they'll send us a new one, but if there really hasn't been anybody, no coun- no counseling students, like I said, this is the first one we've, I'm uh, aware of, we've had a couple of teaching students. Um, it'll expire until somebody wants to come and work in our, do it, at their internship here and uh, probably. Most of the colleges, I have to say, hey, we need a current student teaching agreement or we need a current, you know, whatever, whatever they call their agreement, so usually reminding them.
Do we get this from them because they have an interested student?
Yes.
At why they initiate this?
Yes, we actually have a student that is a employee of ours who's gonna be taking a leave on certain days so they can do their counseling internship.
I'm moved to approve the Walden University US Fieldside Affiliation Agreement.
Second.
Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, post same sign. Uh, moving on to item three is uh, emergency certificate.
So, we have this close, but we need uh, to not have an emergency certificate, but we um, have a teacher taking a year's leave in the life skills classroom at KRV and Evan has finished her teaching program. And Evan has finished her teaching program, but has some tests and stuff to pass, she does not have a special ed endorsement, uh, she won't have one when she finishes, but, um, I've talked to her. A couple times yesterday and today, it's, it is, it's a challenging position in life skills, uh, but I think she's, she's got a super positive attitude and her and her parents seem to be working really well, so. She, she's who, uh, River View hired to, uh, take that year's leave. And I can tell you.
That it's a one-year position.
And there, at this point, aren't qualified special education teachers available.
I would make a motion to, uh, approve emergency certificate or. Swearing gun. Then move in second. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Moving on to item four.
That's me, um, this is a temporary out of endorsement waiver, so, um, just in August, it was determined based on the special education numbers at the middle school and the high school, especially in reading and writing, they were so high, like. The teachers would've had like a class of therapy kits, which, um, is not really, you're not able to really deliver specially designed instruction in that kind of environment. So the middle school and the high school have teamed up together to add a reading resource room teacher, um, Sarah Lynn Ziegler is, she's a certified ed and reading teacher, she doesn't have a special education endorsement, so this becomes an out, temporary out of endorsement waiver for the year. Um, and, uh, that's who they recommended, again, qualified teachers in special education at this point are a challenge.
I think I've asked you this before, Gianna, but like this type of stuff, there's no liability issues with the district.
No, so what happens is when we have a teacher, so there is, if they're in a program getting an endorsement, say they have their teaching certificate, we can get what's called a pre endorsement waiver, which allows them to do IEPs and those kinds of things. If we get a conditional certificate, they can do IEPs and those kinds of things, in this particular situation, eh, so eh, the teacher will have to write the goals and things, but the actual author of the IP cannot be her. So that would have to be, sometimes we, our special education director, we have an IEP writer on staff right now, a contract that we're using. Um, so they have to have support from a certified teacher and that person has to be the author.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Move to approve the temporary out of endorsement waiver. I'll second it. It's been moved in second, eh, and then. Three thumbs up, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign, motion carry. Moving on to number five is the Kennewick School District Agreement for Science Kits.
So this is our adopted elementary science with the science kits, um, we, the kits, because they're very interactive, have a lot of like aluminum foil and Q-tips and. And so to expect teachers to manage all that is very challenging, so we actually pay the Kennewick School District, we, they, we pick, we get the kits, they use them up, they send them back and they refurbish them, um. Our plan is for next year for elementary science adoption, and I would potentially see this changing down the road to something that's, um. Got a stronger tie to the expectations we have for kids now, it's a, they're fun, but I'm not sure that they have the rigor in them that we would want kids to have, but they. Teachers do a good job if they're having them do a lot of writing, the kids are doing experiments, are really doing those things, but, um, I'm, will be something that will be reviewed soon.
And we did the kits before.
We've been using them for like fifteen plus years, the kits were updated about six years ago. Um, to match the new science standards, so they are updated, but they're really not designed to be a five-day-a-week science program. And then the kids come at a certain time and leave, so there's some lapse time too, then teachers are filling with things like wheat week and salmon and those kinds of things, so it's not, it doesn't have that year-long scope and sequence that our kids really need.
I would make a motion to approve the Kennewick School District Agreement for Science Kits.
Second. And move then second in. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Uh, moving on to item six is the first and second reading of policy fourteen hundred, leading contact order of business and plot.
Basically, um, through our conversations, we're moving from this location to the. From Prosser School District Boardroom, and so we just need to update that in the policy, and then, um, we had some language in there that said we had a study session every month, and we changed it to if and when needed. I mean, there's no operational changes in that other than the location and the if and when needed.
So if we do have, it would just be a special.
Yep. And we'll still follow all the same protocols for notifying public in doing that, posting the agenda.
A second. And move in second is, to approve the first and second reading of policy fourteen hundred.
No.
All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign, motion, motion carry. Moving on to item seven, is the financial emergency and austerity measures.
So we had a long board meeting the last time, talking about the budget, and I've got the summaries for those who may be listening and then talk about the letter. Um, my takeaway when we left was that it was really hard to approve the budget, or basically you couldn't approve the budget, but went against your board policy. And the board policy says that you have to have a plan and austerity measures in place to assure not only our community and our public and the state. Right, that we have a plan and pace to follow our board policy at the minimum of four percent with our goal of, like, six percent. So the letter was written, um, with many, by the way, everybody who's listening, I did not write this by myself, I had partners and team, that's Delise and Deanna and, um. Um, attorneys and eh, you know what I mean, our legal counsel to make sure that we're following the guidelines of the policy as well as making sure that we could do this. The piece that, um, anybody who's listening or watching or has looked, oh, looked it up, and it is considered a deemed done. So, once we can make a public statement that the twenty-three, twenty-four budget ended at a certain level, and our enrollment is a certain level. The precautionary measures that are put in place are deemed done or not needing to necessarily be followed through, because our budget will be in place to put it in that. I want everyone to know though, that our goal is to not just hit four percent, our goal is to hit five and then six, and then we just had a big facilities planning meeting, or we just heard about. Um, you know, planning for the future, five and ten-year plan, Delise and I are committed, we'd like to see in that neighborhood of an eight percent, right? Um, right, that's what we, we've talked about, and, and that's where we're heading. So, while this is a very black and white letter of what those would mean, it does give peace of mind that we're doing it. What we don't want in the Prosser School District, um, board members, is to be in a situation where we have to make a riff notice in the spring, or that we have to cut something that's. Black and white, right, we want everybody to have a little stake, and so if you go down the list, you'll see that, um, we did change. Or not change, but when I met with the coaches, um, I met with them about the C-team and seventh and eighth grade combos, we did divide those into two different items because. We wanted to clarify, um, I'm gonna mainly use middle school football as an example. For a lot of years, they had a seventh grade team and an eighth grade team, and then our numbers went down, and they had what was called a seventh, eighth grade combo team. That's not what we're talking about, everybody, we are going to have football, if there's not the numbers for a seventh grade team and an eighth grade team, we will have that combo team. What we were talking about with the combo team was, if you have a seventh grade A and an eighth grade, or a seventh grade B and an eighth grade A and eighth grade B, we, we try not to cut at middle school. So we did this combo team of like what, at high school level, you call a C-team, and that's what we're talking about, we're not doing that C-level athletics if we fall into this. And I'm welcome for any other questions.
Well, I think, um, you know, after our last meeting and going through the budget, I think this is an important start to get us kinda back on track. Um, so I do appreciate all the work that went into, to going through this and, um. You know, I think we do have positive things, but I do think we also need to be proactive and prepared if, if not, so, thank you. Any questions from him?
Uh, um, as far as like the, the coaching side of it goes, I mean, if it, if you ended up with that, I mean, worst-case scenario, I mean, are there coaches' contracts that were already signed that would start to be paid out?
We have one C-team volleyball.
Mm-hmm.
That, um, has been appro- uh, approved, and you, if we have our first count in September, does not meet our goals.
Yeah.
Um, then we would be responsible by the hour to pay them up to the point.
Cool.
Of this two weeks, like, for their hours of work, so that they were whole, we would not, not pay them for their two weeks of work, right? And they were aware of that, the coaches association was aware of that.
Okay.
Um.
And we've actually done that in the past, just because all, all of a sudden, one year, maybe you had a C squad, and there just weren't the numbers.
Uh, yeah.
And so we have to say, we're sorry, we'll pay you for, you know, here for the week of tryouts, and so that has happened as, in the past as well.
We are, we are very committed to people who work for us, we pay their time.
Yeah.
Well, I move to approve the financial emergency and austerity measures.
Second. Been moved in second to approve the financial emergency and austerity measures, she me, Alexander, any questions? Um, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Thank you, so now moving on to resolution oh eight two four, adoption of the twenty-four, twenty-five.
So the three of us would kind of like to tell you all, um, about the last couple days. I mean, and, and seriously, I think those that are listening and people are hearing this. We're pretty excited. Now, so I want you to know, so if you wanna know.
Don't look at the leash.
So this is, this is like low excitement, medium excitement, and I'm the top of the graph, right? But what we're telling you is, you know, I mean, that's like, this is kinda how it goes, we had a meeting for about thirty minutes this morning. And we want you to know that that teamwork is what's gonna make this work, where Del- where Delise goes, Kim, no, you're not doing that, right? And, and it's funny, but that's really what your business manager's supposed to do, that's not a good way to do it, this isn't how it works. Deanna goes, we gotta do this with curriculum, we gotta do this, right, that's what makes a team work, we're happy to say that our attendance or, um, count is up. Eighty, and projected by next the sixth to over a hundred over what we budgeted. So, we're projecting in the neighborhood of, for everybody who's listening, one million or so, a little more than what we budgeted, which is on the revenue side, that. Almost instantly solves our other piece, our, our revenue side, or, or four percent that we have to make, then we have some good news on our expenses for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yes, so we are, right now, even with all the expenses paid out in August, we're still about two seventy-five under budget for expenses. Um, it doesn't include any accruals, um, I, I project probably a hundred thousand in accruals, but then our revenue was also, I mean, we're over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than what we budgeted for. So it'll probably take our fund balance to about one point five at the beginning of the year, fingers crossed.
So.
Do it all.
But we're telling the people who are listening, and thank you for passing the austerity measures and making sure we're conservative and cautious. Um, we're hoping that we'll be able to notify you in writing that we are comfortable and secure as soon as our count comes in, and then together, when we. Project our, at the end of our twenty-three, twenty-four, when it's shared, that we are financially secure in, in moving forward. The other piece that's exciting about that is you chose option four, remember when we did the budget, which then includes our curriculum and includes those other pieces? So, um, we are cautiously optimistic, if you're talking to me, I'm like, gee, Delise is going, Kim? But we want everybody to know that Prosser's in a good spot, and we are committed to being in a better spot next year than we were this year.
And we will continue to get students till after Labor Day, that we haven't counted yet.
Is it across the board at entries, or the specific to like?
Across the board, yeah, it's, it's pretty crazy.
Yeah, it's pretty crazy, like.
It's my two, you're, you're welcome.
No.
And I think it's important that you say that, right, now, I do wanna be really clear, we did have. One TK class, right, over what we had the year before.
Eighteen kids, yeah.
So that eighteen is new, but other than that, it's across the board.
Our kindergarten numbers are.
Yeah, we are, uh, if for anybody who's listening, principals, we know that every kindergarten class is at the max.
Yeah.
And that's a good problem, because twelve years from now, that means that class is dead, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's because we keep talking about new curriculum.
Our new curriculum's working, so, that's good.
So that's my opener to your resolution.
Ta-da.
Get the hard counter, but.
September sixth.
So on.
The first day we did.
So on September sixth, um, I know we're gonna go budgeted, uh, enrollment till November, right?
Well, technically, it's through December, funding-wise.
Okay, and then from January on, it would go with the September sixth number?
Correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. But TK money, we get right away, so as soon as we do, as soon as we file in September for enrollment, the TK money will come through on September enrollment, but the regular portionment won't update until January.
Gotcha, okay. And then. You know, being the optimistic person now, um.
Thanks, I'm glad you're on.
If, if all this comes to fruition, um, next week, or whatever, will we have another financial emergency completed document to vote?
So, from what I can tell, and I'm gonna be very transparent, I've never written one before, but if you read our policy. It says in that policy, it's being done, once we can assure that it's done, so we don't have to, um, come, we don't have to cancel it or do another motion. Um, I think what I will do is make a formal notification to the five of you, this is what the count is, and this, you can consider this deemed done. And then I think it's good business practice to be transparent to the community, that on our September eleventh meeting, we'll have it as a discussion item. And clarify what the count was and what the things and how we did it, so it's on public record.
And I can tell you, our, our athletic director calls me, comes, finds me in the gym, our, our numbers for athletics are really up.
Yes.
Really, really up.
Really, very, very up, so they're like.
They're, they're, they're holding them off till September, but they're hoping for a little more because of the, especially the middle school cut kids.
Yeah, we don't like the cut kids.
Any other questions, or at least, can I?
That's, good news.
It's really good news.
Yeah.
Well, I make a motion to, that we, um, approve resolution oh eight dash twenty-four, adoption of the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Been moved in second, it's, it is, well, yes, it is a resolution, so it's a roll call vote, so I'll start with the students, you can give me a thumbs up or not. So roll call vote, uh, Michelle.
Uh, yes.
Right?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Two of both yes, motion carries. Thank you for all your input on this, and.
Thank you.
I do, I do appreciate.
I do appreciate Kim including me in the financial emergency austerity measures, but I really didn't do much, so. Just gonna confess, I am your sounding board, but.
That concludes our action items for tonight, moving on to reports, Delise, you're up first.
Okay, so I have a few, um, the first one is student enrollment for June, um, we did not get to present it when we would have in July. when we would have in July because of the network issues. Um, so I'm presenting it now. Um, enrollment was down ten in June, um, due to a a family moving out of district. Um, but other than that, it's that's about it for that one.
It was, it was actually was, it was two, but one was seven, one was three. I think it was seven and three. Right?
Um, and then my next two reports are June and July financials. So if you're looking at June, uh, June and September are notoriously terrible months for financials. September, we have our big eight hundred thousand dollar insurance payment that comes out at minimal revenue. And then June is only six percent of apportionment, and we have cash outs and, I mean, vacation cash outs alone are a lot. Um, so our fund balance did dip pretty low in June. Uh, July is much better. Our apportionment percentage was twelve point five percent. Um, and our our expenses also were down, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. So we're sitting at the end of July about, uh, two point one million for our fund balance. Um, and which is a lot better place than I predicted we would be at in July, so.
The July financials, did I miss? Oh, I did miss it.
It's okay. Down one more.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, Deanna, you're up next.
Um, I have quite a few things. I'll go quickly. Um, we did quite a bit of professional development last, over the last couple of weeks with our teachers coming back, our new sort of staff. Um, we did adaptive behavior strategies with all teachers, uh, which again, we talked about this a little bit before. I told you, like, there's so many, there's a lot of challenged behaviors teachers are experiencing, they haven't experienced before. So this was giving that those, um, strategies to all teachers to use, ways to interact with kids, ways not to accelerate possible behavior or exactly, you know, they make it a little exacerbated. So uh, it was really good. That was thank you to Nikki Swanson, Taylor Munoz, and Maruziski. I did that presented. Um, two of the teachers never presented it from a big staff that presented in front of all of our certified staff. Um, we also did our new certified staff induction a couple of weeks ago. There was twenty to twenty one, but one was at other training that they had to go to for us that were here. And some of those are people that are experienced, some are brand new. Um, they were just, we were in this room, such a fun group and very engaged and, um, walked away with a really positive. Uh, we really focused on student relationships at that first meeting on how building student relationships makes a difference in a student's success. That's the number one factor is relationships with students that impact student success. So that was really great. Um, we also did our training, our American Reading Company K A program, we did training because we have quite a few new teachers. So our instructional coaches chose to lead that and worked really hard and planned that. They did a fantastic job. Um, I I toured the Boys and Girls Club last week and it's just looks great. I know there's some tours are coming up, and if you want a chance to go see it. What was really cool is the big space that used to be like the big shop is kind of there where they put the basketball court, kind of their big multipurpose room. They have that as well as computer lab and some other spaces. They they want to partner with the community in the school district and use it as a meeting space. If we needed a training space or a meeting space when they weren't using it for Boys and Girls Club, I thought that was really cool. Adjacent to our facility, it looks great. It's gonna be done soon, um, really soon. Um, those of you that do the Festival of Trees, I think it'll probably be there. Um, and then kids will be in there after the new year. Uh, also, I graduated from Prosser Leadership. I haven't graduated from anything for a while, but I graduated. My other graduation, yeah, it was, it was fun. It was fun. It was a really good experience. And if you have opportunity to do it, you should. Uh, the Prosser Leadership, I told you before, chose Unified Mustangs as their project, and we raised two thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars and sixty two cents to help get, you know, kickoff. We actually got a donate that you can apply for grant funds through, um, Special Olympics. So they actually bought our uni- equipment. So we'll be able to buy uniforms and some of those things for the kids to travel. So that will be coming up, you know, during the winter season. Um, I would like the some, if I I know that the Prosser Leadership Plus, I'd like them to be able to come to a board meeting. I can email and invite if we could add them um, to do a thank you for that fundraising, um, that the that group did, uh, to a future board meeting.
Um, with, I'm in Prosser Leadership too, and I can always talk about, you know, Alexander, we can always bring it up to the class too, about coming to a board meeting.
No, this is, this is like a class for adults that I did, but it's called the same thing, but you guys are welcome to come as well. When you guys graduate, you should take the Prosser. It's actually like a class and you're gonna, you learn about all the different, like, things that are available in in Prosser, the kind of industry we have, the kind of, um, so, you know, supports for families that might be in need. It's really very, it's really interesting. My last thing is about our student reps, and I know Yushimi's committed to been done doing this for two years, Kami, you're new to us, but Alex, I watched you get on your bike from Montecito Estates today. He rides here on his bike to board meetings every time. And that's a big commitment. So I just wanted to recognize him for that. Not all kids would be that, to come to a meeting with a bunch of us. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you. Any questions for Deanna?
Just my, um, volunteering in public and jacket robbery on a regular basis. I'm glad to get that back going and just for then to hear what we've got going on. Reminder that the surplus sale is Saturday, the seventh. Um, we are making a commitment to opening that up to our staff. Um, sometimes, you know, they go, they're in a classroom or an office and they're going, oh, that would work. So we opened it um, on the fifth and sixth, towards the end of the day, they come in, there's no cost if it's going to that to the, you know, their class or their office will move it, whatever. And then it's open to the public at seventh, September seventh at eight AM. Uh, Labor Day Parade, we're in the parade. I know where the band's in the parade, but we'll have our bus and trailer shirts, right? Did you double the candy this year because we ran out of?
Yeah, it's so bad.
Yeah. Yeah, the first corner, I mean, I think we were home, so. Excuse me. The Capitol loving meeting was great. I think people were able to ask questions and things are going on. Pulse of Prosser starts again next week, so we'll have that publication going out. Happy to say we have no open meeting going on. Facilities, district office, you'll be really excited when you walk in the front door now, our new emblem, or not new emblem, the emblem that's new, lies on the wall and in the boardroom. It looks very nice. It's really good. It really finished, did some finishing patches. The tennis courts, the old asphalt is down, the drains are in, if you can even see the cuts. Um, the fencing is starting and some landscaping are state, I'll do lots of stuff around the outside. Um, it does have to cure for, um, thirty days, so they'll start surfacing after September twenty sixth, and not gonna be long. And then guess what? We're gonna look at that pretty thing and then we're gonna put a padlock on and say, see you in the spring. But it, um, it is a big deal. It's a good thing for our community. The old tennis courts, did you notice the hedges are gone? The arbivida hedge is gone? Yeah.
Just yesterday.
Yeah, but I mean, but came down, the, um, stumps are grinded off, done whatever. They're still because it grew through some of the chain links. So there's some fin- finite work that has to do. Um, they're going to repair them. And, um, so forth, except for the surface, probably surface probably won't make it down till spring. Now, if we get a really strong Indian summer, you know, late October or something like that, or do they call that late fall? But really warm weather in the fall, in October. I don't think I'm in the summer or something when it's like that really warm.
I don't know, warm later in the year.
Yeah, anyhow, so October, if we can keep it warm, right? That's the cool point. It, but here's the key, it has to be sixty degrees or warmer at night.
Yeah, that's, it's, it was forty five degrees last night.
Pretty much done. So, but that's
Well, this morning when I went to work, it was cold.
Let's see, Halsel Middle School, we got the bid for the vestibule. Really excited, less than two hundred thousand for the vestibule. Now, I want you to make it really clear, in case, because you're gonna look at the vouchers and so forth. That's the wall, the window, the flooring, the part, there will be another contract for the hardware, that's the mechanism that makes it work and so forth, and some door handles and the technology piece.
A question on that vestibule. Is that construction gonna get in the way? And it's the main entrance, right? So.
They'll probably be
The gym, they they can just have the kids enter.
For the gym.
The big part conferences, nine, ten, and eleven. And they already go into the gym for conferences anyhow, so we'll try and do that major mess, nine, ten, and eleven.
We've, they've, we've been through a lot worse than that. So going through a different door, we can handle that.
Um, and and the Art Viker access, um, these are not new terminology to me, but they've got the compaction then, they have to do the test of the compaction before they can put asphalt or a concrete down. And then once that's done, they'll do that ramp and then they'll tie the stairs in. They're still saying mostly completed. I don't know that we can walk on it by the first game, but people will be able to see the major work done by the first home game. And people, I did have a question. Somebody sent me an email. I want to make this public. There is landscaping that is similar to what was done here. It's mainly rock with pockets of shrubs, grasses, and things like that on that side. So it's just not a wall of rock. Um, district opener, I think it was good. Frank and Brian were there, so I'm sure they'll share about that. The calendar for the year is getting put together. I've been blowing everybody's email.
I was like, who sent me sixteen invitations today?
So we're loading up the year, um, everything from A W S P teacher trains, all the different kinds of things. Um, it was a fun first day of school. I took pictures in all the buildings. I think it was good and, um, we didn't have any. I I don't think I had any parent phone calls, so I consider the first two days a success. Um, we are starting our safety security meetings. If you remember, last year, we did safety one time. The next month, we did security. Towards the end, we got some of the stuff worked done. And so we're gonna go to one safety and security once a month. Um, and we'll do it before the first four meeting of the month, so that we're not meeting three times. And caps is up.
Thank you.
Imagine, I don't know how many people are on the line, but the tennis courts, people drive by and see that it's
Oh, yes.
It has kind of a weird look to it. Um, can you just briefly explain kind of some of that?
So I learned even more today than when I was asked last week. So, okay, students, a plane, right? So, uh, one tennis court has to be on the same plane with less than a one percent change in grade. And because of there being eight tennis courts, there are four planes. And so tennis court one and two, no, I'm doing it the wrong way. One and two go like this, and three and four go like this. Five and six go like this, and seven and eight go like, uh, the opposite. And there's drains down the middle so that the water flows off to those drain cuts that are in there. So if you drive by, I did the first, and then, and Jason called me, whatever. It looks like this when you stand there and you're like, oh, my gosh, they didn't know how to, they're doing. So once they're striped and done, it will make perfect sense. It's, um, within the guidelines of National Tennis Association rules uh, based on the plane of the tennis court.
And the one of the reasons we get so much damage to the other one because of water pooling, so that'll prevent the water from pooling. Water pools and it freezes and we get cracks, and then it also just colors the surface, so.
The other thing, in case you see them out there with this big saws cutting, they're cutting across the courts where the nets sit with a line, and you won't see it once it's pour, um, got the surface on the top, and they're cutting on the non-drain sides between the courts. It won't, you won't see it all, but we want it to crack in those places. And those cuts are pretty, um, drastic. And then they use, um, I think they called it the word tape. I think of it as like a sheet rock tape, but it's with asphalt. And it sits on there and then the surface is there. And then when it does crack and freeze, it does it not in the centers of the course. Much like your cuts in your driveway or something like that.
I'm amazed at how large it is. I've had a couple of people say, put in another parking lot over there.
Thank you.
Okay, board member reports. Michelle?
Um, so the WASD general assembly is coming up on the twentieth of September. Just wanted to let the other board members know, there is some pre-event sessions that are interesting, looking at some of the topics, starting on the third. Um, so if you get the WASD messages, you'll have that calendar. I will forward them too. Um, and then they also did share a board tool that I'll share out as soon as I can figure out to get it to open. None of my devices like Microsoft, and so, um, I can only open this like board tool on my phone, but it's basically a spreadsheet for, with a column for every board member to kind of put in their opinion on each of the things that we'll be voting on. So I'll share that out with the rest of the board. And then, yeah, um, first day of school was great. Open house at the middle school was really fantastic. I was um, really impressed with actually, once I found out, so anyone who wants to enroll their kids in our district, you can do that online. Took me a long time to find that out, but there is a way to just enroll your kids right online. Um, but within, I mean, a day, I was hearing from the counselor about scheduling. We had a couple of things we wanted to switch, and it was super easy. Um, open house was really, really great, meeting all the teachers, and the first two days have been great for my kids. So as I told Kim, aside from the, like, parking and traffic kind of cluster in the pickup and drop off.
There was a car that broke down on opening morning in school at Alexander and Highland. And our community members got out of their cars and pushed it out of the way, but until that was decided, the traffic was all way before me too. Like, until we got the car out of the way. So not only is it bad normally, right? But it was really bad.
So that's the only, that's my only complaint about the whole experience. It's all been really great. Um, so hopefully that's a good sign for the rest of the year.
Um, yeah, as Kim said, Frank and I, uh, went to the district kickoff morning. Um, it was, I mean, first time I've been to anything like that, which was cool to see. It was kind of like, uh, first day of school for grownups almost, um, but, um, seemed to be obviously well attended and, um, seemed like good energy, uh, so it was good to see. Um, from everything that I've heard, uh, certainly the first days went really, really well. So that's, it's always good. Good foot to start on. As Kami said, fall sports got going, uh, jamboree and Grandview on Friday, so it's always exciting to get things kicked off here. And then, uh, gonna try and make it down to K R V uh, Friday morning to I don't, what are we wrangling? Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, hopefully that'll work out. Looking forward to get down there. Yeah.
Um, not much, just going to the district opener. It was, that was, that was good. That's quite a team you guys got. And you guys did a really good job of rallying the troops and it was fun to be there.
I just see so much positive news. It's so nice to come to a board meeting and does, everything has been positive, there's such good direction. Um, I just had two things. On Saturday, part of the proceeds from the pancakes by Becky at the, um, farmer's market goes to fund the scholarship for Jeff and Rosie Brown's daughter that passed away, her memorial scholarship. So have not experienced pancakes at the farmer's market, you need to go early, because if you're there after ten fifteen, it is dicey whether or not you're getting a pancake.
And I get biscuits and gravy probably for sure, but maybe not a pancake either.
It's, it goes, it goes fast. So get there early, get your pancake, and then just happy state Dan, I'm excited to see the entries by everybody and all the students in the street.
Um, I don't have the ton. I went to the evening session, um, which was, which was really good. It wasn't probably a lot less attended, but we had a lot of good families there that asked good questions, uh, the speaker Jaime, and, um, it was, it was fun and we had really good food. So, um, that was, that was definitely a bonus. And that's really all I got. Looking forward to next week and what we have to um, what we get to hear about in the future, so. Anything else to discuss? Comments?
I have a question. I don't know who who might have the answer. But middle school fall sports, do they not start until after school starts?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's been a couple of times in past twenty years, so they've had to start early, just depending like when we've had a really late start, but usually it's after school starts.
It's like, do we miss it? Because great. Great.
Right, so our next meeting, next regular board meeting will be September eleventh, on, in the fourth. They'll take me a few times to read this correctly, but it'll be in our new Prosser School District Board meeting at twelve zero three Prosser Avenue at six PM. Um, so looking forward to that. Let's read it in German. Thank you. Yeah.
E-bike. That's what I would ride.